6:30 on Tuesday, January 11th. At this time, we'll call the regular meeting of the East Bay Charter Township Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ewan.
Here.
Sozinski.
Yeah.
Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Cook.
Here.
Next, we'll review for conflict of interest. Does anybody on the board have a conflict or potential thereof with anything on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll seek approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda of Tuesday, January 11th, 2022.
I'll spark.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, approval of the minutes from our December 14th regular meeting.
I think we got just one thing, I see. It said the motion passed five to one. I think it was four to one.
That's right.
Where was that at? What's in these minutes?
Uh, page three, in the middle.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other corrections or can we have a motion?
Just a minor typo. John, your last name's?
Yeah, I already said that.
Oh, you got it already? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see anything else.
Those people are looking for me.
All right, I'll move to accept the minutes of the December 14th meeting of the East Bay Zoning Board of Appeals with corrections.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have an opportunity for public comment. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the board regarding anything at all?
Much.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Variance request 1-22, Mr. Coonan. And he is the owner of a parcel of land commonly known as 1889 East River Road, Traverse City. Property identification number 03-340-002-00 in the Boardman River, B.R. zoning district. The request requires a variance from Section 505, Table Number 1, yard setbacks, specifically a 20-foot backyard variance resulting in an 80-foot setback from the Boardman River. The minimum setback for a structure on the Boardman River downstream from the Brown Bridge Dam is 100 feet. And Mr. Coonan, if you'll just tell us who you are and give us some information about your request, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen, ma'am. I want to thank those of you that came over to my place. Appreciate the interest that you had. I've lived at that place, a small place, 740 square feet, for about five and a half years. I know I can afford a garage, but prices are so high, who knows? But the, I'm 76 years old and have no space. I have sheds that are deteriorating and I felt like I should get a, before I get old, I should get a garage. Interested in protecting the Boardman as much as everybody else in this room. I founded the Brook Trout Coalition. I was on Trout Unlimited. I have an interest in preserving all my property as much as I can to save the river. I will be fighting against steelhead and salmon coming into the river, and I expect they will come, no matter what. Steelhead, not necessarily salmon. So I think we lost that fight. But aside from that, all I want to do is have a garage that is close to the house. It's on the same level as the house. And if I could put it there, I could save this tree. It's a huge historic, heritage pine tree. And the way I have it set that I would not, watershed would not increase significantly on hard surface because I'm going to put it largely on that blacktop that I have. So all of the other parts of my property are preserved. And going away from the house, it becomes, because it's lower, it's more wet. And so it seemed to me the most logical place, and I hope that you think so as well.
Okay.
Do sit down now.
Yes, of course, you may. We may have questions throughout the proceedings, but thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Does anybody in the audience have questions or comments regarding this request? All right, hearing none, we'll close this to the public and open it up for the board to discuss and potentially act upon.
I got one thing, Dave. I asked this probably a lot, too much, actually. Why is East Bay Township 100 feet to the river? Garfield Township is 50 feet, and it's, well, the city's essentially zeroed.
Because we adopted the Natural Rivers Act.
Yeah.
And Garfield did not.
Yeah.
Nor did the city.
That's right, yeah. So...
That's why we're 100.
Okay. That seems, uh, that's, thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Of course.
Is okay time to throw in my two cents?
Yes, sir.
Several of you have been to the site already out there. Beautiful site. To expand a little bit on what Mike was saying is that, and there are pictures in your packet that show this, other areas retain water easily. In a heavy rainfall, it's going to be very wet. So building is a bit limited. I noted in condition number seven that it was not satisfied. And I feel that that's my duty as a zoning administrator that if you read number seven, it says there's no reasonable alternative location. And he could move it back, the site plan for the garage 20 feet back, that would not require a variance. However, as pointed out, and I think it's an important thing to note, there is a very mature, large, wonderful pine tree there that would have to be removed in order to put that garage there. And as Mr. Coonan and I discussed in his house, he's not 21 anymore and doesn't want to walk 100 yards to get to a garage in knee-deep snow. Again, though, as your zoning administrator, I felt it important to note that it was not satisfied, number seven, condition number seven. However, in my recommendations, at the end, I said that the board may feel that by preserving the tree and issuing the variance, the Natural Rivers Act would be better served. And, oh, any questions?
Thank you.
I have one question.
Of course.
On the pictures in the back, number three, is that the tree?
It is.
Okay. So that's the tree, and then that's all wet behind there, isn't it? Okay.
And Mr. Coonan, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. On the site plan visit, you mentioned that it would be your intent to tear down the existing sheds if your garage is approved.
They're on my, I didn't know this until, well, my neighbor advised me. I've been there four and a half years, and he said, "Oh, by the way, your sheds are on my property." So he's been kind. And I had it surveyed, so in order, because I don't know what I'm doing here, really. And so I told him if I could get a garage out here, I don't, I don't want them. It would approve the feng shui of that area because it would open up that stuff. So I don't need them. They're in, you know, you, somebody went in them. You see, they're loaded to the gills. So it'd be nice to have a place to put stuff, so.
So would your intention be to tear down the sheds?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make them into firewood?
And we should note that we do have one email from a person who supports Mr. Coonan's request.
Members of the board, I forgot to mention that. There are two letters that are on your desk. They came in after the packets were out. One is for variance 122, and the other one is for variance 222.
Discussion?
So, on page, we kind of talked about this out on site. So there's some sketches here, so at least get a little bit better visual of what the site plan potentially looked like. On page 13, there's some discussion of a small request of garage just 20 feet from the 100-foot setback. Placement is within 20 feet from the 100-foot setback. Just so I understand, what is, what is the footage requested in the variance? The exact footage? Do we, have we determined that?
It would be a 20-foot requested variance.
20 foot.
Yes, sir.
All right. So dimensionally, I know, I know some of these sketches are not drawn to scale, but I've seen on a couple of these drawings, it's noted that the river is 50 feet from the house. There's the house, and then if I'm reading this right, roughly 30 feet between the house and the proposed garage. I have to imagine that the house is more than 20 feet across or close to it, right? So I guess what, has anybody actually pulled a tape to see what, what the distance is from the garage to the, to the river?
I did not pull a tape and measure from the river's bank to where it is.
Do you see what I'm asking? On page, page 14, this sketch, it's got a, I don't know who drew it up, I'm guessing the applicant did. But there's a, there's a 30-foot dimension roughly drawn between the garage and the house, 50 feet on the other side of the house to the river. What, what is that, that distance across the width of the house?
I did pace it off.
You did.
And of course, that's not exact, like a tape measure. But it came out that when I got 100 feet, when I walked out from the house into the parking lot, I was only about five feet into the, into the parking lot there.
Okay.
So to me, it appeared that the variance they were asking for was actually a lot closer to the 100 feet than not. And I didn't go to the river, I just went to the property line because I wasn't too sure where the, you know, where you, where you measure from.
Sure. And that's, I guess where I'm, I'm in support of the garage and understand the, the conditions of the tree and the existing, you know, we went out there and looked at it, and it's fully, you know, reasonable, I think. I guess I'm just, would feel better about making the decision based on if we, if we had a more exact number here, a more exact difference. I mean, I don't want to offer up, I guess, additional variance footage from the setback that's not going to be required, that's going to actually, not actually going to be needed. You know, if, you know, he paced it off, and plus or minus five feet, you may be offering a 20-foot variance when there's only 10 feet needed. It does offer him some flexibility when he goes to build it, but at the same time, it would, you know, could turn into a bigger structure, or maybe it doesn't get built because the variance goes with the land in the future, and somebody else, you know, builds a different structure there because they have the variance.
Okay. If the, if the 20-foot variance isn't needed, though, and a 10-foot variance is, we're still, we're still good, though?
Yes, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I just, I'm throwing that out there for everybody to discuss. I mean, we don't, I think we talked, we talked with the applicant. Typically, they've gotten far enough during the application process where maybe a contractor's involved in some, like an actual site plan, an exact site plan has been laid out.
Normally, yep.
You know, and I think he did a pretty good job of kind of laying out some, some rough dimensions with some stakes when we were out there on site, but it'd be nice to, to get sort of an exact measurement, or more exact, you know. Maybe it doesn't have to be perfect, but we, we've got a better idea. I guess this, this 50, 50 from the house to the, to the river, and then a 30 between the proposed garage and the existing house leaves a delta of whatever the house is, if that's, if that's what's proposed.
There is a survey.
Yeah, I'm looking at the survey.
But it's not to scale.
But, yeah, well, yeah. I mean, the survey's there, but it's not, it's not giving you those, those exact dimensions.
You know the width of your house? Is it 24?
Yes. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, so with that in mind, the, the proposed placement of the garage would be within a legal setback by right.
Mm-hmm.
Be just over 100 feet from the river, as long as one edge of the river isn't significantly different.
Right.
Than another.
Well, it is. That south line, the south line is closer to the house than the north line.
Yeah, but the house and the garage are kind of oriented parallel to it, so it wouldn't, I wouldn't think that affected too much. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't move a whole lot, but just, just trying to get a better, better handle on what, you know, I don't want to be too nitpicky, but you know, it is a, this Natural Rivers Act, you know, we're trying to do a good job of protecting it, and don't want to give up more than we have to, I guess.
And one of the things I noticed on the, on the survey when I was talking to Mr. Coonan there, that Coonan, whatever, that he was pointing to a spot on the other side of the tree, saying that was 100 feet, whereby the survey, it's 150. So I think the surveyors were actually using a different setback when they were, when they were doing this. Because if you look, it's 150 feet to where they have a setback on page five. Is that my letter? I didn't know. Was it wrong? Did you run it back?
Oh, the summary letter?
Yeah, let's presume that I don't know any of our subject area. So I thought setback would run 50, and then I looked at it.
Oh, okay.
So I'm kind of agreeing with Mr. Cook that I think that this could be very close to not even needing an order of variance on this.
Right.
But I don't know how much you want to hold the gentleman up to get, get things moving as far as doing it.
Well, we, we could table it for additional information if you wish, or we can move forward.
You're not going to break ground between now and next month, are you?
So whatever you, whatever you wish to do, what do you want me to do? Do I need to do anything?
Well, I guess, you know, we could make a determination as a board, what variance to offer. I don't know that that would be appropriate because you're the one asking for the variance, and you, you need to, you need to know what your garage dimensions are and what your existing conditions on site are.
He, I may be going backwards because I have no idea, but I didn't, I had already talked to Elmer's about concrete and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But I didn't contract a contractor for the garage because I didn't want to go through that process if I wasn't going to give a.
Sure.
A variance. So that's why it's coming out backwards.
Yeah.
So let's say you did give me a variance, then, first thing I'd do is see if I can find a contractor. Chances of getting one built in '22 are not even that great right now, you know. So I'm good with whatever you want to do. I want to, key thing is to preserve that tree. That's my, the tree, you know, so however that works out, I'm, I'm great, and I'm not in any rush.
Just to understand, I mean, I guess from, from my standpoint, is, you know, you asking us to do that, we certainly can. We can pick an arbitrary number, and he walked it off with his feet, and his feet may not be 12 inches exactly, they may be a little more, a little less. I don't, I don't want to put, you know, our board in a position where we're kind of determining the outcome of your garage location based on walking around in the snow. So like I'd mentioned to Preston a minute ago, typically, when we see these variance requests, they're, and a lot of times, they're brought by the contractor. So the contractor has actually done some, some legwork, and he's the one, like, hey, I know all the exact dimensions, the, here's what I'm asking the board on behalf of the property owner. So not to say that you're doing things backwards, but this is kind of a, in my mind, kind of a key element that we need determined.
Yeah. So my thought, thoughtful comment, while you're, while you're deliberating, I would like to at least have a little wiggle room, so that.
Sure.
Because I don't know exactly, the 80-feet thing is, I don't want to have to put it right on that edge for the, whatever, the 100, 100-feet thing. Because then there's a lot of, there's a lot of liability for me if I don't do it right.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
In order to approve a variance, you have to know the exact setback that he's going to have.
I agree.
Right.
So we can't arbitrarily pick something or give wiggle room.
So, so what do we want here? Do we need professional survey results? Can we use 100-foot tape measure?
My suggestion is just based off experience, and it sounds like you're, you know, doesn't sound like this is a truly exact science to you as far as laying out what the garage, you know, dimensionally what it needs to be. I would simply spend some time using some kind of mapping tool, like Google Earth. Google Earth, you can measure, you know, down to the inch, and it's pretty exact. I mean, it's, it's very, very exact. And you could lay out your garage in that pretty simply, and then come back to us and tell us exactly what, what variance you're, you're asking for.
All right. And, and if you find that you need a 92-foot setback and an eight-foot variance, we still might be able to grant a small amount of wiggle room, as you described it.
I'm going to ask Preston, can I ask him to help me with the Google thing? All right. Because I want to, I don't know how to do all that stuff, to be perfectly honest.
I can point in the right direction.
All right, great. That's all I got.
Yeah, and so I guess our action is just to table this until he brings some additional concrete dimensions.
Right. Yeah, if we.
I'll tell Elmer's for the concrete.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Motion?
I just got one thing. I think it would be better to build it where that existing asphalt is, just based on stormwater alone. You better have the big, mature tree for stormwater running into the river.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
But I agree with all the other stuff. I just want to say that's, because it's impervious, I mean, it's already impervious, so you're not adding something.
Yeah. And Carl, that's his exact intention, to put it right there.
That's what I mean. That's why I like that.
As, as a side note on saving the tree, just, I'm sure you're aware of this, but keep in mind, there'd be a, probably disturbing the ground there a little bit, and there may be some roots there, so it'd be something to look out for.
That's why I want to kind of move it up, you know, have it that, because, yeah, there could be a root wall there.
Mm-hmm.
And I want to try to avoid that.
Sure.
Would be moving a little further away from the tree.
Okay.
And that's where that variance thing comes in.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I think it'll actually be a lot more straightforward than you think. That the Google Earth, I mean, it's, it's a good tool.
All right. I'll get that Google machine going. All right. I'll talk to you guys.
All right. Thanks, sir.
We still need a motion.
Make a motion to, all right, do we have the numbers signed to this?
Postpone consideration.
Make a motion to table variance request 1-22 until we get further information.
Okay.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion?
Who supported it?
Paul.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Thank you.
Glad you asked. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. And at this time, we'll move on to variance request 2-22 by Stellar Hospitality, owner of several parcels of land on U.S. 31 North. Property identification numbers include 03-320-005-00, 03-320-002-00, 03-320-008-00, 03-320-009-00, 03-320-010-00, and finally, 03-209-001-00, which are located in the regional business district. The request requires a variance from Section 224.3 access control measures, specifically a 30.5-foot variance resulting in a 369.5-foot between neighboring driveways. The minimum required distance between driveways is 400 feet. All right, and sir, could you please tell us who you are and about your request?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Andy Andre, Triumph Engineering and Design, 10775 South Saginaw Street, Suite D in Grand Blanc, Michigan. As, as you had mentioned, we're seeking a dimensional variance for the driveway locations. And really, specifically, this came about through our engagement with MDOT as we came along with our access management when we were proposing the development here. And so what we had done, and as part of your package, you'll see there is a transmittal and email from Jeremy Weiss. He's the permit agent at MDOT, kind of confirming, you know, what we had done from a design perspective. But, you know, even, even so, there is a requirement according to the ordinance, so we are seeking that variance and reprieve of the 30.5 feet. The, just of why we're actually asking for it is really, it comes down to, it's a practical difficulty that is in the public interest because of traffic safety, fully traffic safety and access management purposes. So we are proposing two drives as part of the development. That's what you see in purple there. I gave you a little bit, I know you have a copy in your packet, but mine is a bad, I can't see it, so I thought a little bit better, a little bit bigger would be there.
Hey.
I'm with you, so. And then what you're going to see is on the north side, or excuse me, on the other side of the, of the highway, you'll see in orange what we identified on this plan as far as the commercial drives. And so what we did is we aligned our drives left-turn-wise so that there wouldn't be a left-turn conflict. If we were to meet the 400 feet, because we do actually have the frontage available to meet the 400 feet, but what would happen is if we staggered one of these and met that 400, shifted it down 30 feet, we're looking at left-turn conflicts as, as somebody would be turning left out of here and turning left out of here instead of being aligned, it would be almost meeting in that centered lane. And so it actually is really a situation that we want to avoid. And so, again, working with MDOT, and from, from a public interest, traffic safety standpoint, we felt, and again, they're, they're ready to issue the permit for the project, that this is the best scenario for us. So we are asking for that variance based on all those conditions that I talked about.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We may have questions as we proceed. Mr. Taylor, do you have anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I wanted to add, and he mentioned it, was there was an email correspondence from MDOT, which would indicate that they were, I don't know if in support of is the right phrase, but that they, they were good with the proposal to move the driveways to mitigate left-turn conflict. So that's in your packet as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll open this up to the public if anybody in the audience has any questions or comments. All right, hearing none, we'll close the public input and open this up to the board for discussion and possible action.
Yeah, I think this is a no-brainer, quite frankly. And I know MDOT's going to be okay with this because it's a safety issue, and it's not even that, that much of a variance, I mean, what's 30 feet? I mean, so, this is a slam dunk. But that's just my opinion, maybe not the rest of you guys.
So the, the ordinance, our township ordinance requires the 400 feet between. It's not driven by anything, the variance request's not driven by anything required by MDOT or any other authority?
Nope. Nope, that 224.3 says in there that it is required 400 feet.
What is the, what is the intent? Do we, do we know kind of the backstory of the, is it just an arbitrary number, or?
I probably could fill you in a little bit because from, from a traffic safety, and I deal, you know, with this all over the place, it's really to mitigate having driveways too close to each other that actually do cause issues. If you, if you start to space driveways a little bit closer, you know, right turns out, conflicted left turns.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that was probably the intent. Where 400 feet came from, I'm not really sure.
Is 400 feet an industry standard, or?
You know, when you, when you deal with MDOT, typically it's based on the speed of the road and the, and the geometry of the road, how many lanes it is and left turn. And, and so in that case, you know, it's usually, I haven't seen it where 400 has been any type of standard. So to fill that back in, you know, from a township ordinance perspective, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
But I, I do understand, and I think, I think we understand what the background and the intent of it was, you know. But I, I do understand and I think, I think we understand what the background and the intent of it was, you know, and, and we certainly would, would comply, but I feel that I think is, I, I think you're right. To get, I got to be honest with you, when I talked to Jeremy and MDOT, he's been terrific. It was like pulling teeth to even get him to send an email because he's like, it's good, we're ready to issue the permit. And I'm like, but it takes a little bit more, we, we need a little bit more for this.
So, so the purpose of the, I see, you, you sort of requested the.
I did.
The email from them, it was kind of to maybe support, bring some additional support to the meeting.
It lends a little bit of, you know, it's not just me standing up here telling you.
Sure, yeah.
It's from MDOT and that, that they are satisfied with the geometric layout. I, I think that's probably the word, that they're satisfied with it because a different configuration is just going to be a bigger issue.
And I, I asked for correspondence from MDOT and Mr. Andre provided that through that email that he was given.
Okay.
And sir, did MDOT actually suggest the requested configuration?
Right, very, that's a very good question. So when we started the development, we started the conceptual, I, I've been involved with the projects since the beginning. We actually look at, from the access management standpoint, we look at those things and we say, listen, we have to start to align. And so we actually did that and we worked in conjunction with them early on at the development of these driveways.
Okay, so, yeah, I get it now, thanks. It's straightforward to me, gentlemen, any more discussion?
So from a, I guess from a design standpoint, it looks like the bigger driveway, the bigger access on 31 here.
The west axis?
Yeah, it looks like from a design standpoint, it, it lines up pretty well with the two buildings. Coincidentally, it's also across from the opposing driveway on the north side of the road. So I have to assume that the variable here, the one that got moved, the subject of the variance is the one to the, to the east.
Right, absolutely correct.
Okay, and it was just really moved to, to align with whatever, I don't know what building, hotel across the street.
If you look in the background, I know it's again a little bit different. There's another driveway here.
Yeah.
And, but that's, that's a residential drive-through there.
Okay.
And so that really, we, we take that out of the factor, right? So we take that out, so we looked at that commercial drive that was there and did the alignment at that point.
Okay.
So, but you're absolutely right, that is, that is the, the one that is the factor in this variance request.
Is there anything that the fire department has to sign off on this variance as far as entrances and exits to the?
I don't think so, because.
Not on the variance, on the site plan review, they have given comments.
But the 400 feet has nothing to do with the emergency vehicles getting in and out? If there was a, a big crash there and one of those entrances were blocked off, they.
No.
They, they have multiple ingresses.
Right, they had that third, that third ingress and egress, which I was thinking would take care of, if that was a problem, so that was my, that was my question.
Just, just so that I can get it in my head, I'm looking here and all the pedestrian access off of the sidewalk on 31, looks like there's stairs and ramps, is the, is the site actually below?
No, there's no stairs, it proposes, those are probably ramps and sidewalks that you see. So we have pedestrian connectivity at a couple of different points out to, out to the highway, to the pathway along the highway.
Okay.
And I, I guess, you know, one of the things I guess would be interesting to mention, because when MDOT came through and redid that road, it was how many years, not too many.
Not that long, no.
If you look, they, they replaced the driveways to where they were is the residences that used to be here. So those driveways actually were replaced, you probably saw them on your site visit. We're actually proposing to close those off. So we're closing at least three driveways along this. And so we're, again, our, our whole goal is to centralize our traffic and to channelize it the best we can under the highway and with the surrounding properties.
Just, just to clarify for myself, the, the variance being on the east side is that's between that entranceway and the building to the east?
So what, I, I guess the, I would say the ordinance is nondescript. The ordinance just says it has to be 400 feet. Our whole purpose really is, we, we started right here, right in that point, and then we looked and we said, okay, let's go here. So in actuality, if we were to comply with the 400-foot, this driveway would shift, you know what, probably pretty close to what's there now. There's an existing drive, so actually we're shutting down four drives. But again, then we're looking at turn conflicts.
Yeah, yeah.
This is our, that's our, that's our bad spot right there. So while, while the ordinance, like I said, is nondescript, that really is what we're asking, we're seeking on that variance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
From that point.
Yeah, I just was curious, that's all, thanks.
Yes, and the letter that we received or email is in opposition to this request, but I don't really understand their point because we're, we're learning that with, with MDOT's assistance, they, they've actually come up with something they expect to be safer than the ordinance ordained 400-foot.
You want a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll move to approve various requests 2-22, the Stellar Hospitality, okay, then US 31 North.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, sir, thank you. And we'll move on to reports at this time. Could we hear the news regarding the town board, please?
All right, so we haven't had a whole lot of activity, I guess, on the, on the board. I missed a meeting in December, there was a discussion about, I believe, paid parental leave. That was, that was it. And then we had a meeting last night and generally speaking, it was very vanilla as well. There wasn't a whole lot discussed. We did have some reports, we had a planning report, so Preston set in for Claire, since she's still out, gave the planners report, we had a report from Wade Trim on some projects here, road-related projects, updates on those. We had, I'm trying to remember the, we had a guy, probably the most interesting thing, we had a guy here talking about some of the Boardman River improvements that they've made over, over the years and continue to, some of the projects along the Boardman River. And I guess that's about it. Grand Traverse County Commission, commissioners gave us a, a kind of a quick update, but they didn't really have a whole lot to report on either, ambulance report, but that was, that was basically the meeting last night.
Very well, thank you. Could we hear about the planning commission meeting?
Yes, sir, we had, we had a rather extensive meeting on January 4th. First item was about the GORec proposal for what they want to do with the property. That, basically, the item was tabled, subject to some additional information, and will probably be taking that issue up at the, the next meeting.
Okay.
In addition to that, we had the issue of Stellar Hospitality and that too was tabled because they had a variance. So they were waiting for the outcome of that, plus some other information they're needing. And then we had a hearing on a zoning amendment dealing with the multiple uses in, I guess, was a couple of other areas of the township.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we have another opportunity for public comment. If anybody in the audience wishes to address the board regarding any issues at all, here's your opportunity. Hearing none, we are adjourned.